Able to handle major traffic volumes without hazards. Okay, so those are just, those are all documents that, these are the town documents that I'm reading out for you. Do you have any questions for me? I probably should stay right now, but I may have a conflict of interest.
No. I'll ask as far as, you know, right now, we are literally looking at Atlanta's results. Any kind of building, any kind of thing, that's a whole other ballgame as far as access and any infrastructure. I mean, that I'll get taken care of, the building side of it, not the zoning side, which is what we're talking about.
Right.
So, all those questions aren't ready to go tonight, except for if that property is right for that zone.
A lot of times when somebody will come in with a zone change, they come with a concept, and that's what Harry Wyon, he came with a concept. Is this a good fit for the town? I haven't spent the money for a concept because I don't have the zone change. So, I'm looking for the zone change, and if there was some question, what are you going to do with that? And I just, the only thing I can do is point to our code and say, "There's a commercial." Pick one of them. Any one of those can be in the commercial zone. That's all I can really say. I don't have a concept, so.
Back out to the folks. Any other questions or comment?
Are you supposed to vote on this tonight? I'm gonna look for a vote. You bet.
I have a comment. Eric probably will tell me to shut my mouth. We have no intention of changing anything we're doing. We've just, for what we are looking for and been there, we, this is what we have to do. And honestly, the people around us, they don't know it's coming. They're not involved, they don't really care, they don't believe it's coming. We're doing what we need to do to protect us. Nothing's changing. We are still living there, we're not doing anything there, other than living.
Today, but...
Yeah, today, but, I mean, but if we ever did change, then we have, we'd have to come and approach you guys with a concept. But that is our whole purpose, is we're living there, you know, so.
Any other comments? Kind of the council, is there any other comments or discussion we'd like to have? I would like to call for a motion tonight.
We're, I'd like to make a motion for the zone change to the bunker property to recommend to go to a commercial zone.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Anybody still thinking about it, or just...
I guess we can have a second discussion, right? It's all second.
You have a first and a second. Any last discussions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I, I think that Planning did a pretty good job on thinking about it. I was at one of the meetings, and I think if you look just exactly at the code, I, I don't know that I would think it was a good idea either. But with what is coming, and what we probably ought to plan for, I, I think it might be a reasonable idea. Does the, you guys have any comment thoughts on that, or anything, Kim, or Pam, or anybody else?
No, I, I can speak for myself, but I thought zoning covered it pretty good. I do think that's a valid point you brought up, John, towards coming that way. So, does it really have a big impact on the town? Probably not.
Any other discussion?
Do you have any thoughts?
No, I think I already spoke, Mike, that the neighbors were, and maybe they're not aware, I have no idea what, that I, not the neighbors, but...
As I remember the neighbors, I think I was at the meeting, and something...
Uh-huh, they were sitting over here, sitting here, both of them.
And it seemed like more questions than actual concern to me. Like, what are you gonna do? What's going on? Instead of, "You can't have that, you don't want that." At least that's kind of my recollection, and maybe I'm wrong.
I think the first part's true, but they, I asked them their opinion, I turned around and asked them, and they said they didn't want, want it.
But I agree with you, John, in that meeting. They were more or less interested in what the property was gonna be designed for, and no one had a concept for it. Therefore...
You just have to look at anything that compiles in that zone, and that's what we have.
Therefore, I don't know where they went from there. But that's kind of the way I remember it happening. They, they were thinking they were gonna come to the planning zoning meeting, find out Smith's grocery store was going in. Yeah. And so, where does that leave everybody? I don't know.
Isn't there an overlay with the airport radius of overlay of what you can build in that runway, that I've seen?
Well, it's, it's kind of a strange thing. They invited the whole council to come into a meeting where they thought we would sign off on such an overlay that, that they designed. Well, we had no intention of signing off on an overlay that would impact our town without basically any say. So, what they've done now is they've adopted their own without us signing off. Apparently, they didn't think we were cooperating, so we didn't get invited back. Because there was really nothing in it for the town, other than restriction. And so, it was like, where's, where's the give and take? And so, it went on quite a while, the meeting did, and there was just no resolve. So, we haven't been invited back to any meetings.
We should get, well, at least one of a person on that board, it should be at least a vote for the advisory board, and be able to adjust the council every so often, as often as we would like them to.
Charleston has the same, really, on the airport. You go to any of Charleston meetings, and they are really affected more than Daniel's.
Yes.
And then planes take off, that's where they're gaining altitude is over Charleston. I mean, it's just, those people are really affected down on that, and I know they're very aware of what's going on too.
So, we just got a little problem with what we're also...
So, we've had a first, and we've had a second, we're still in discussion. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I have another question, a comment, and a book for understanding. So, this kind of starts commercial going down 3,000. Does the council have any thoughts on how we can limit that, or not limit it? Is there a stop? Is there not a stop? Is that too much of a question for this decision right now?
My thoughts are, is, you've got the county right on the other side, right there.
But I mean, as we propagate down, so Eric gets commercial...
The neighbor wants it.
The neighbor wants it, and how do we say, "Oh, you can't have it, but you can"?
Talking to some folks who are familiar with this, you know, there is gonna be a line, I don't know where that line is at the moment, but what we do tonight is not necessarily say precedence that anybody can have it, there are circumstances in this situation versus any other situation. And so, the precedence, I know is important to you, and very important to me with regards to, everything always has a reason why it's a little different than something else. And I believe that the motion could be made for the reasoning why we would make it commercial or not, depending on, well, we've already had the motion, we've had a second, so thereby that line isn't gonna need to be established by whichever group comes with the next application, because I don't believe 3,000 is a busy thoroughfare. I do believe I-189 is. How far away can we get? That's where that discussion is gonna begin.
Do you have any neighbors that are interested in going that way? Have any?
I have not talked to them, no.
Yeah, well, they're, not as far as what's actually happening.
Because it looks like they've made an island down there, there is a whole area. Yeah, well, Harry Wyon, he came to talk to us when he made his. The county don't want to just have an island, if you're gonna do it, make the corner, you know, all the way through. Well, but it's, it's application driven, yeah, so until somebody else wants to trade certain... But maybe the county would say, potentially, this area down.
You know, we'd have to change the code, or change that boundary, have to go through that process.
Say, anything up to here can apply for an order.
And that discussion's sort of been talked, except for we don't know what the county's gonna do now, if they go back and if they don't go up, yeah.
I just see it's bad to have sponsors, you know.
So, we've had a first and a second, we've had some discussion. Any other discussion? If not, the chair will call for the vote. All in favor? All right. Any opposed?
So, what's the vote?
Right now, it's two ayes, one nay, a silent, and a silent.
I'm on the fence, Eric, I'm just, sorry, I just don't have enough information, I think, so I don't know.
Are you excusing yourself from this voting?
Well, no, see, when, when there's a, well, if there's a conflict of interest, I have to state that, I do not have to abstain from the vote. I would like to abstain from the vote, but I guess it depends on how the vote goes. I, I don't think you can vote if you're in conflict, because can you? That doesn't generate... Well, absolutely, you can.
Yes, you can, you always say that.
Okay. So, what does this vote have to pass or not pass, Brian?
I think we need one, one more vote, we need one more yea vote to pass, or it may die and not, uh, be voted on, or...
It's passed, rid of that option.
So, I guess I would vote to approve it.
So, we have three ayes, a silent, and an aye. Motion passes, three, three to, I guess, three to one to one?
Three to one to one.
I don't know how you say that verbally, but...
But Planning, thank you. It was hard, it, that's a hard decision.
Well, and that, I'd also like to tell Pam also that the council didn't want to send it back to Planning, to take another look at it. And I just, I couldn't see any way to send it back to Planning without looking at Planning and making, I mean, I know how that would look to me, if I made the wrong decision, look at it again. And so, I didn't want to send it back. And I know you guys didn't have all the information or a packet like I just provided. I assume that everybody was on board with the whole plan at that time. But they tried to get me to bring it back, and I was just reluctant to do that, just because of how it looked. So, I guess, I guess it's hard to be in a position on the town and get anything done, for sure.
Yeah, that's not a fair position to be in.
I could remedy it, but I've been threatened if I do remedy it, so.
Well, I think all the constraints during the building and the infrastructure process that my concern felt more so than anything, because that ended the road, seems logical for that, now what might happen afterwards.
And I do expect that we will see some more applications.
Yeah, what is gonna go?
I talked to him not too long ago, and if he feels the time is right, he would do it.
They'll be here, and that's what it should be.
And we kind of told him that, actually, when that, all that went down.
So, now we have that highway corridor, intersections, any four, pretty planned, so they'll be able to tie that corner into what we designed, as far as UDOT, so UDOT should be on board with anything that they design will be at the parameters that we set. Granted, we are not affiliated with that agreement, we did sign, we didn't like some of the wording in that, but...
I, I just want to state again, though, that commercial in the town does not pay for itself. It's, in my opinion, it's not a good thing. I am not a strong supporter of the commercial in the town, even, even on these corners. But the future of this piece of property, I think, is a special case.
And I, there's another good thing to point out, too, John, you brought that up, that even though it's zoned industrial, or is commercial, that the use is residential, when that use changes, they come back in with a concept.
Yeah.
So, that use is still gonna be that use until there's a concept that, that'll come in front of the planning commission, and that will change to a use that's either allowed in a, in a commercial zone, or in a conditional use in a commercial zone, or... So, that's, that's where we, there's a lot of properties that are zoned different than what they are, but they've been used, the use is what it is. That continues. Once that use changes, then it impacts, and so that's, that's when you're able to see that on the planning level.
Okay. You may as well keep talking, Eric, because, no, excuse me, Kim, Daniel Municipal Waters, we'll send Daniel for the first one, if we, if there's anything to talk about. Daniel?
Yeah, there's a couple of items. We've got a water leak in, on Crazy Acre Lane, it's at John Heinz's residence, and it's been there for about four weeks, but I don't know where.
And is that, okay, is that, that's off? And Daniel Municipal, not Stormhaven?
It is Stormhaven.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I said Daniel.
Yeah, we'll do Stormhaven first, then.
John's here tonight, and we've looked at a pine tree that should come out, we think the water line's right under it. We don't know what we're headed into when we dig that up, but there's a good possibility that we have to replace the whole line. And if we do that, the tree definitely needs to be out. And if I'm not mistaken, I think John is all right with that concept, last that I heard, I probably should, should get some approval on that.
Well, Mr. Oakberry says, "I, I wanna cooperate with you people." Now, I'm, if it has to come out, I guess maybe that's the best solution. Mr. Taylor wants the tree, but he can't figure out how to get it, so I guess we need a big helicopter.
Follow it up, fly it over, and drop it in.
He wants it delivered.
So, John, you're on record, you're all right with that?
Yes.
Good.
I hate to, I hate to be out there at 20 below zero, you know, trying to unload the fence and stuff. And of course, you know, they don't move those trees for nothing.
Which is my next item, I've got two bids on it, one of them's for, $1,120, and the other one is for $950. They both are covering the same specs. So, it would cost $950 to have that tree removed, and...
Is it odd, where, property-wise, would the tree be as far as in easement, non-easement? I mean, I know it's been there for a while.
Actually, from the road into Mr. Heinz's property, we've got about, I'd say, 40 feet, maybe 35, and then there's the box. It's not out by the street, therefore, it becomes our responsibility on that part of the line.
Up to the box.
Yeah. But any, any time we've dug lines up, up there, we usually find quite a few surprises, just old pipes, and many cuts, and they fall apart. But if, if we try to do this and link the tree up, there's obviously a possibility that the tree, the root, could go to the house and cause some damage, especially with the ground as wet as it is, we've had that water leak a month caught wet. Now, if we take the tree out, and we move two feet away from the box, back towards the street, and there's the leak, then maybe the tree didn't have to come out.
But...
You just never know with these things, and if you have to dig that section up five years from now, the tree shouldn't be out of there, you just, I, my recommendation is to take the tree out.
Can you re-route the line easily? I mean, is it...
Pardon me?
Can you reroute the line?
If we go to the south, we're, we're almost in East Drive Way, if we go to the north, there's another tree.
The, with the electronic reading of the meters, you know, I, if I'd have kept my mouth shut about this leak, I might have managed to die before anything is immediately done. But I reported the leak to, as soon as I noticed it, here about three months ago. I used to read, supervise the reading of meters a lot, a lot of times, a lot of other things.
So, time-wise on fixing this, is it something that we watch till spring, or we do right now before, or what are you, what are you, back to the...
It could have been leaking for a long time, I don't know. I haven't checked the meter since the line gets that much. But there's a leak there someplace, it hasn't affected my water pressure. Kim thinks it might affect the water pressure for the whole area.
Well, we don't know how many other leaks that we don't know about in the system.
So, I'm a little confused, is the water line on town property, or is it on private property?
Well, I have to be observing, Kevin. I know that, that the box is inside John's property, and there's a fence 10 feet to the west of that, and then another 20 feet is the Crazy Acre Road.
Kim, do you have, maybe some insight on that?
Um, we have the, the, there's a little pan's moved up here, under this area, and right now, it's showing, like, this area here's where the water line supposedly is and where the meter is for his lot. And over here-ish, according to my research, the water line is on his property and not on town's, whatever.
We need a, a real picture on that.
A picture's not gonna be as good as Kim, as Kim's, by the look of the idea.
It's already not, it's flat.
I just had a group. I looked at it. I think I, I got the concept.
Is that the scale, John? Is that drawing the scale just by...
Absolutely, it's one to 30. I'll tell you 30 watts some other time.
30 watts?
Right, had his head down in there, two, two or three feet, he said he could hear the leak.
Close enough.
I can't hear that well.
Can you hear the leak above the ground?
No, we had 40, 10 down.
Stick my head in the can, you can hear the water running. It's definitely on the city side of the meter, but I don't think, well, I'd say it's not too far away, except the way those all, you know, the galvanized iron, you know, pipes work, it can be...
Carry noise.
They can carry forever, so you can hear a leak, but I'm not gonna tell you, I know for sure where.
Mr. Goodfellow should put the box on the outside with a valve on each one. A long, long time ago. Kimberly, would you show John...
Here. I see four.
Got it.
I've been looking at it for 20, almost 28 years, and I've never seen the main. Every time there was a leak, they always come down and open my valves, run off, it tripped like a horse, forget it. But years ago, I used to test 75, 80...
So, was that then to remove the tree and the root ball, or just cut the tree down?
It's remove the tree and grind this stump. So, I imagine you still have some roots...
The ground roots, or something?
No, it's, it's down in.
It must be down to 4 bucks.
I'm not aware of getting a required bond, we need insurance, but I don't know if they require the bond.
I'll haul it off, if you don't cut into chunks, it's a whole lot of big lengths, I'll come turn it over, and try to haul it off, and then recall.
Will they drop it from a six-foot section? I couldn't take it out with them.
I guess that's what I'm trying to establish, our creation is...
What kind of tree is this?
John, what kind of tree is this?
I believe it's some kind of spruce. I'm not sure if it's a Colorado or Utah.
Okay.
Christmas tree. Yeah, it's a Christmas tree. Maybe we could give it to the state, and, yeah, the government could use that.
It's good, let's say, 28-inch place.
It was about nine months ago.
So, real quick, so we've got Crazy Acres, it has this concrete driveway that goes into his house, and he has a little shed. There's trees all the way around the property, the floor we're talking about, or basically, he's got four trees right here. We think, near as we can tell, the meter probably goes under this last tree. His meter base is here, and then it goes up into his house. So, he has a fence, this purple line, the one that shows it inside the trees, sorry. The, the trees are inside the fence. We believe, based on the wonderfully accurate maps that we have, please protect all, but we, we don't know for sure where the water lines are, but best available information, we believe the water line is out on the city side of the fence, but we don't know by how far. The trees are inside the fence, and then, assuming the lateral's straight back to the pipe, it goes under the tree. There's a good chance I've gone out with a little GPS and moved around, there's a chance that our water line's actually under the trees. There's a chance, you know...
See, and that's...
That wouldn't surprise me at all, if that's what happened.
See, and that's, that's what my map shows, I mean, a lot of those are right underneath, right next to the barns, I mean, they're, it's right there.
So, if you, if you go back up over here, there's an irrigation ditch that you can see.
Uh-huh.
And if they put the water line just on the, this side, it's all at an angle, I won't use north, southeast, and west.
Property side, property...
The property side of the irrigation ditch, which seems like electrical choice, it lines up almost perfectly with just inside the fence, or right under the trees.
About how far an excavator would have to sit off the ditch to dig the ditch?
Yeah.
For the water line?
If they dug it on the other side of the irrigation ditch, it would put it right on the edge of the asphalt. And best information we had, when we took the system and we went through that lock-in, they said, "No, the water line's right here, go ahead and shoot it." The GPS shots with an attempt of a foot of where they thought the water line was, not the best idea. They, they've mentioned that it wasn't anywhere near the asphalt, but it was well up the asphalt, so...
Who asked the question, if this was on John's legal description, his legal description?
Who was that? And it's legal description.
In other words...
I just, I'm just asking, is it just on our property as far as their easement or his?
Well, what you look at here is if it's in his description of his property, then the town can say, "Well, John, you're gonna remove that tree, it's in, it's on your property." My argument, or discussion for that, is yes, but we've got a box back there, and we've always taken care of things from the box.
Have maintained, you can...
Out the main. So, therefore, my recommendation is the town base to treat it. Secondly, when we do take the tree out, if we have to come back on the line and replace it, we're gonna have a lot of answers where existing pipes are at, and what's going on up there.
So, the tree's at $1,100 bucks, what's gonna be any of the excavation?
$950.
Okay.
And then to excavate that, I would say anywhere from 800 to 29...
Go up by 100, okay? Get to there, roughly. And at that point, you'd see what we need to fix then, or not fix, or whatever you have?
But logically, you probably just will go to your main, replace it to your can, while you're doing it. If you're gonna dig it up, and that would be me as the excavator, you just will replace it, so you guys don't have to come back.
Do it, Ron.
I have an excavator.
Put the meter, I fix the line.
I am serious.
I am too.
What's, what's your name?
Todd.
Todd?
Wow.
Well, I tried to get you to dig this last time.
I was busy.
I was, really.
So, ironically, based on our experience this year with the last one, my guess would...
If you're gonna go to the expense to dig that up, you just will go to your main and have new, you're... I personally, I mean, just food for thought, I'd start getting your meters, if you're replacing them, get them back out to the road, and let the owners take care of it. I mean, I realize this is existing, but if you're redoing them, that's a good time to get back where you guys should be.
Come back in your east.
In your east, so you're not going up to people's property.
That's true, but that's a pretty narrow road.
Well, I'm just saying, as you do one, it's not gonna cost you any more to move your meter while you're doing this job.
I, I think you should probably put it in another spot.
But that's your choice.
But when you do that also, you need to go back and take care of John Heinz's...
Well, you, you can hook him on where he's at, and then from there, it's it, so. I, I'm just saying, it's something to think about, to save the town problems in...
If, if you've got a hole, that's a great idea. If you've got a shovel and a pick and pole, then it's a whole different subject. Believe you me, I've dug up a lot of those holes, and they went four foot down, the shovel and crosbar.
Absolutely.
Anyway, you could be in this as high as $4,000. You could, you could get lucky and get out of it for a big amount.
Probably, I haven't seen it.
Now, do I need to get approval from the council to have this tree removed?
Those kind of dollars, it would, or just...
I'd rather have to move it out for more.
And, well, I guess if we're talking, a tree's one cost, and you have another cost until a $4,000 budget.
We're just talking about the tree tonight.
I'm just looking, it's getting okay, I mean, I, I can't okay that, and I just like to do what we all think. I wanna do it right the first time, and dollars are important, but I wanna do it right.
I actually think we're right in that, that water line drawn, that's where the fence was.
When I moved it?
I think that that is probably where the water line is.
Might, if I had to guess, based on what we found when we dug up the last one, is that the most likely leak is right at that joint, the way they join the main to the lateral, seems to, I don't understand why they're not all leaking like it's if. So, that's where I would start. And we could save the tree expense if we knew where the water line was, but the only way I see is getting the water line, is we're gonna start at the can, and we're gonna dig back here till we find the main. And, and then we'll know. But if we, if we have great data like we do on the other system, I'd say, you know, dig down and find it here, or wherever it is, right there.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want to mess, I don't want to mess with digging around that tree, it's saturated in that area. John told me the wind never blows up there this time of year, but with my luck, I'd dig around that tree, everything's saturated, I would cover 40 mile an hour wind, and that tree lines up in the middle of his house.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
How much money are you just saving the town?
So, I'm gonna ask you, Ken, something... So let me ask you, Ken, or, or Ryan, if we go back to what Todd had mentioned about that, can we bring that can back out closer to, like we have most of the other people? Do we need to keep it back in this particular situation?
I'd say, if the first line I drew is right, then the can probably needs to stay really close to where it is. If the second line is right, then I think there's some room.
And I'm assuming that tree's coming out no matter what, so regardless, then if the tree's coming out, the can will be up on our side?
So I don't, so I don't disagree with Kim, but digging around the tree in saturated conditions has its, has its risks. The problem with what I'm saying, is if, we don't know where this is, so the best way to find it is to start at the can, where you know something, and start digging. So, in a perfect world, if we knew more, we could do this, but otherwise, we start out here, and we start digging, we have no idea when you're gonna hit anything.
Once the tree's out, we start digging back, right?
Is that, is that ever? I'd actually like to go out and look at that.
Now, so Kim, I talked to John, I, I had a, a different idea that we could dig around, but, you know, by the time we were done, we dug on two and a half sides of the tree. And to Kim's point about falling over, even if it's not saturated, I dug on two and a half sides of it, so. And I think, uh, talking with the property owner, he'd rather us cut the tree down than take his house out.
Well, I've sent my wife to Hawaii or someplace, because she'll probably shoot some of the diggers at the. I'd have took the tree down twenty years ago. Mayor, I'm bulletproof, guys.
I think there's two in our lockbox for the town, so. Um, Eric would like to look at it before we give you the okay. We obviously have to solve it, I, I have no problem with, uh.
I'd really like to try and wedge that line and see if it's behind the tree.
Council, okay with that before we, uh, do the fixing on it?
Are we in a critical, are we dangerous?
Yeah.
How many sides is that line? Is it four-inch galvanized? Or what is it?
Or does anybody know?
Our best guess is that it's a two-inch PVC. The main, I will.
The main.
Mayor, that, that letter I've given you. Just while we play some golf. At our last meeting, I wrote you a pink slip from what you said on the second.
Three-quarter inch galvanized. Sometimes copper.
I would, uh, like you, Calvines, Council, to, on this letter, be peremptive.
You gotta see how they connected the two.
Uh, it's, it's short and sweet.
And, well, the problem is, you melt, and then they say they didn't get it. That's the problem. Which is why we tried to send the one registered, maybe. We can't say that, and of course, we didn't get that back.
We're gonna talk about that in a minute, too.
Put it on the door and take a picture of it.
Still, the wind blew, the neighbor takes it, I didn't get notice, is a.
Well, I'd like to try it if we could.
One of the municipalities do it as well, and it may not be the right secret, but.
So is this the one you wanna send to the attorney for his opinion?
I don't think what he said, the attorney.
You don't?
No, why you?
Because he's the one that has to defend it. I'd like to get his opinion if he's gonna have to defend it.
What, what does some of the other municipalities do, set down solid?
I don't know what their agreement is.
Well, the, the two issues that have gone up for a couple of months is that we need to have, so you start sending this to all the people with the bill. They get this, but then we, a lot of happens.
Only to the Lincoln's.
Only to Lincoln's. A, a lot of folks haven't signed that other document back when. Um, in our own code, we don't have a remedy for some of these things that we need to remedy, even though there are ways to remedy it. We just don't have that, uh, in our code, which we should have in our code. So there are probably two or three that, uh, we just need to, just don't do what where, and then we get adjusted a little. But it would not be in our, I'd like to have a, a way to do it, rather than, the other way, we're gonna do a couple in the beginning, if that makes sense.
We, we had a letter that we were sending out, um, I'm not sure when it was, to the Lincoln's. It stated the resolution to, uh, allow a fifty dollar charge. And we sent them a copy of that resolution. In, in this one, I, what's the need to do that? I mean, here, here's the amount you owe, this is, you need to pay it within so many days, or your water gets turned off on this date.
I don't think it hurts to send a resolution. If somebody, if somebody tells me to do something, and they tell me it's the law, I wanna see that law. I mean, I can read English, I like to see that law. That's not what that law says, this law says this.
I'll tell you, the only other thing that, that has been brought over the years is, this might, to me, sounds just great and perfect, but he might say, okay, but in your code, it doesn't quite work. I mean, that's, he'll just give the okay or not the okay.
Let me, let me back up, Mayor, let me. What's, what's happened with, with our contract? What, what did the attorney say about our contract and the changes we made on?
Uh, the, he has not said either way on the latest contracts, that, you're talking about the ones you gave up last month?
Yeah.
I don't know, I haven't answered that. Not given one word. He's, he's pushing us to have the town have our, uh, have a resolution designed or something, and going out. So I think this is part of what he wants, but more so in our own code or resolution that states that, more so than just.
He, he did get the draft of this, this one, where you and I had put on a couple of small changes.
That would have been, was it last month or the month before?
I left it at your office.
Um, I would have to double check, I've got a file that I've sent him and gone verbally gone over it. I do not know if I've sent that, but no, I've verbally gone over it.
Okay. Uh, if, if we can get this draft approved by him, that would be marvelous.
Okay.
And then also the, the collection letter. And if, if you wanna put the resolution wording back in, that's fine. Now, you, you have to understand that when we try to collect money, if we don't have these tools, the balances go up.
Well, I know we're not the only one, and I know we need to collect it, and I know it needs to be done soon, but.
And another point is, it's really hard on the customer, if you let him get up into those thousand dollars and then go after it all at once. You know, if, if you, if you get on top of that a little quicker, it's, it's easier for the customer. They might not know that, but it is. So it's, uh.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, in, in the past, we would simply get the, the figure from the person collecting, uh, running the books, the ledger. We'd take that figure, we'd go out, knock on the door, and say, okay, we need some money, and they'd say, well, I'll try to get you some. But we have to turn your water off. So you turn the water off, you get the money, you go an hour later, four hours later.
That's the quickest way.
That was our old policy, that was our old policy. Now we're tied up in the contracts, the letters, and it's, that's simply because the town's growing. I understand that, we're getting one more complicated.
Well, there, there's even a city now that's actually coming out, turning it off between nine and eight. So it's on at night, but they're not having that service during the day, we're trying to bring that in to give them the pay. So they're limiting their service without cutting it all.
And this letter, 'cause we did one of these back when, that we tried to get out to let them know we're gonna do it in the fall and the spring. Has that not been effective, or isn't this kind of the same thing?
No, it has been effective. We had, we had a letter, in between these steps I'm talking about, we did have a letter, uh, that stated the resolution, we sent them with it, and, uh.
A lot of people ignored it, or didn't address it, or?
The quick, the quickest way to get a response is just swing your key around and turn the water off.
Yeah, that'll get them.
Probably will. That, that's the way you get your response. So, I, I don't know how much of this really plays into it. I, I think the contract's really important, and the timing's important. If somebody wants to hook in your water, that's the time to give them the contract.
Right.
If they've been on the system for twenty-five years, you want them to sign it, you scratch their head a little bit.
Absolutely.
Uh, but just, just everybody knows, if we keep putting this back on the agenda, these delinquent water wells keep.
That's all I've got. The one that's been on back of my mind has not been a user, but it's been just, uh, something else. And these users, weren't they turned off in the fall?
Run that one, you get.
So, in my mind, one of the issues for, uh, solving some water bill lack of payment was for a house, or possibly houses that maybe didn't have somebody in it, but still owed that meter rate, or that meter charge. This is for folks that haven't paid their bills or still have their homes.
Right, right.
And we've already done one of these before, and we have turned some waters off in the fall or the spring. I guess, I'm just, I'm, I'm missing one link here. If we've, if we've been doing that, then, then the letter we already have addressing, I thought we're still doing that.
I think that that, uh, letter that had the resolution got shortened in between the change from, uh, Mayor Duggan and, uh, the Water Department in between that.
Didn't we have, I mean, you know, I, I've been involved, or at least in our discussion of one of these letters going out, the left, well, we, I think two years ago, we, when we formed the, uh, cutoff in the fall and, or in the spring. So that, that particular one, I've been a few years, right, call that currently, you know?
Yeah.
I could find that letter, because it's the same one that went out with the resolution. You wanna look at that one again?
Well, I, only because it seems really close to this.
It takes a lot longer.
So I guess that's what your question is, isn't that not working, so we need this?
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, uh, I, I, my opinion is it could be simplified, but then again, that's your decision. You've got to, I would point to it, and say you'd like to see the resolution. We can go back and just use the old letter and form it.
Well, if it's not working, though.
Well, the reason why it's not working, it's got names on there that says, call, uh, Gary Walton, and call Kim, and call so-and-so. And they'll come over and pick a check out for you. You know, it's, it's.
That's what we bought a policy that's kind of rotten with that guy's.
And we do that all the time, I mean, we got, we're doing that, I'm calling Ryan all the time, changes online, I pull up a, meet a thing, and here it is, it's got, at the bottom, these numbers don't longer work. So, I'll call Ryan, and we gotta change something on, 'cause online, you bring up the application, and there's the number, so. We just did the excavation for that, we have the old names on that, so.
Yeah, if those people wanted to look at the resolution, couldn't they do it through the website?
They could.
They don't have a computer, though. Now what do you do? They're gonna call the mayor and say, I'd like to see.
I think that's why we delivered it.
You said, call before you call now.
I'll get, I'll get both of those two and see if there's any issue.
Well, I hate to see him look at this before the council's seen it.
You mean the other one?
This one he's got. If, if you're, Donald.
There's one other one.
He's got, if you're sending that down to the attorney before the council's had a chance to look at it, we're kind of.
Well, I was gonna do all, either the two that we're talking about, so I could do both of those, but they're already approved back when.
I, I have the same recall Chip does, that it was within the last few years.
And so we should be able to find that, and what I say, send the answer to both of those, is our third one that you're talking?
I, I've got one in the.
He's coming.
An additional one besides this, and additional one beside the other one, okay?
But I don't have the resolution.
Well, hell, then we gotta pass another resolution, we don't have another resolution to cover all these.
So we're gonna find that, and give me that other piece that you have, and then if you can get me the one that was with the resolution, I can send all three of those down.
Okay, so my point is, don't send to the attorney, and the three hundred fifty dollars an hour till the council approves it.
And I get it.
Okay.
I just wanna get all, I just wanna get all three of those.
Okay, we're cheaper than them.
Bill's from going home.
Now, in this certified letter that went out to one of our customers, it did state, uh, that you had the option of paying your bill or simply abandoning the water system, and then if we came back and put a new meter in, you would pay the ten thousand eight hundred dollar fee to hook up with you.
Yeah, I think it also stated that one wasn't available right now.
That's right, there was a moratorium. But that letter hasn't been signed for.
Right, that's correct. Can't verify delivery.
And this individual has signed no contract. He might have signed one with, uh, Storm Haven Water and Susan Goodfellow. So where does that leave us?
That leaves me to get a direction, how, how we literally, the mechanics of servicing that particular bill or something close to that bill. And then getting something that's a regular part of our process of collection, but that one's gonna probably be a little bit different.
In, in the draft that we did for that contract, that I give you at your office, it addressed, it addresses the subject of that. That exact same thing, if it was an item ten or eleven, but if we get the attorney to look at that, and he'll say, okay, this is good, we'll, we'll use it. And then also, uh, we can turn around and say, they've got a contract signed, would you mind placing a lien on that property? And he does it, and he releases it, and then he bills that to the customer. We bill that to the customer, the town.
Okay, is it a good idea?
But meanwhile, we're kinda, I, you want me to go back to your old system, collecting money, or you want me to stay away from it? Go back.
We want you to collect money.
Yep. And, and I would say we wanna go back to shutting off water in the fall and the spring, because we have two years of that before something changed, so. That's our last, that's our last council direction, I think, is that, that letter.
Is there something that we can do as far as those letters going out, if they're, if they don't come back? Then we don't have no contract with them, and we can turn the water off. Why is that? That will get a hold of it.
I don't, I don't think there's a way you can compel some, uh, user that's up to date with their bill to sign a new contract.
No.
But I do believe that if you send them a bill to the latest known address, and they have to do it, that they, they're obligated to do those costs.
Well, and he's, he's definitely in arrears. I mean, this is a different story. I'm, he's talking about the letter we mailed out, and only forty percent come back.
Okay, right, generally, yeah.
Yeah.
Can, we're new owners of the water system.
The new owners will have to sign if they wanna sign out.
Yeah, I mean, we're new owners of this water system, and.
Well, no, but they bought their service, we bought that. So we didn't change that as far as the customer.
So then, if you could put for next agenda item, if we can, you know, we'll have all three that we can discuss as far as the collection letters for Water Department. So, I know you got, one, we've got this one that's in front of us, so we'll just have all three, or two, two more, pack them in, and all.
Let us in on, let us in on that conversation.
He, he wants it off, we can just turn the water off if they don't sign the contract. I don't think we can compel a user that's up to date with their bill, and already has a service, to turn off their water if they don't sign the contract.
Well, it, it could interrupt with, with the department being able to maintain their system and water.
I think you can.
Yeah, I don't, well, you can compel somebody, they bought something, and now you.
They don't have a contract, you don't, you don't have to service them without a contract.
Yeah, but.
Historically, you have.
We had a change in the, uh.
The rules changed, the rules changed.
It went from a private company to a municipality.
Yeah, but we bought those companies. And when, when those services were already there. And I think that's a great legal question. I don't think you can compel somebody to sign a contract, already has, they have their contract, they bought their water. They're in compliance with what they law. You have new rules now?
Like a service agreement, though, like you're saying, I don't know if they have to service it.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I own a water company, and the only way you get their attention is to shut up water. They will, they will write, you might write anywhere.
Nope.
They will write letters to you.
They'll call you before you.
They'll be in touch with.
Before you get to the office.
Yeah, it works really well. And I know you're gonna have some problems, but you just treat them nice when they come through the door.
Come pick your guns, your wife out.
I went through this about seventy years ago, with the, uh, coal company in Pennsylvania, they dug under our well, and it went dry. So we had to go find a spring up to haul it. It's only about forty miles from where our hatch was, our board was ready. You know, it's my, in my opinion, if, if, if they don't sign the contract, you turn the water off, I think that's perfectly legal, and they sign the contract. There's nothing in that contract that is pretty much standard stuff. But, that's up to the council, whether, whether we're supposed to get approval from, uh, the attorney or not. I'll leave that, you guys just call the board once again.
I'll, I'll try to go, uh, after we discuss it, when I discuss with the attorney, uh, that the whole, all, everything you're talking about, not just the collections, what needs to be in contracts, what kind of resolutions, what course, and then we'll get, so we, we've dealt on and off with this issue for a prior few years, and we'll get, we'll get something to, to institute, of course.
But I, I wanna make sure he, the attorney sees the, the new draft that we did on this whole contract. Because it's, it's got things in there that, uh, solve the problem, and we have this one, so.
Is, is that the only one that we have that problem? Is, is that the only one that we have that problem?
No. Uh, we've had it on some others.
Have, have they been resolved, is this the only unresolved?
Uh, yeah, this is the only unresolved.
It's pretty good, you did a pretty good job. That's pretty awesome, Ken. That's, that's great, one out of all the customers.
Works like that, we gotta listen.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's awesome.
And the only other thing I have is water, Daniel Horst, who is your report on how good the water is.
And so I just gave the council a copy of the.
Sources, well.
Yeah. And then I also gave Stephanie the sheet from the state, that's, that talks about our water system, where our sources are and everything. So being a new council member, I, I gave her those things, so she, she has those in her hand. I think our values is from there, was, was where our sources are, inactive well, and those kind of things, but.
Okay.
So before we move on, Kim, do we still have a, something if it's a hardship, do we have a clause in there that we, we, we kind of help our folks for, for really pretty black and white on it now?
I'd like for me, we add that.
I wanna say that there, there is a clause for that.
You can come before the council.
Yeah. So that's still in there as far as you know?
I think that was in, uh, uh, in the last year, it was offered to somebody, didn't take it up, but it was off the map.
Sometimes it's hard to be kind or gentle.
I don't see.
It's, it's not in there.
I don't see it.
Every time I've seen the first one, it's never been in there, it was a case of, there was a hardship case. Hopefully, the person who tried to get ahold of somebody on council or planning or let somebody know.
So by verbiage, we've kind of all understood, but it's not on paper.
It's not on paper, because somebody, I can't remember, somebody once said, if we put that in there, we have every Tom, Dick and Harry coming to talk to you, and you guys are gonna be saying, you don't even begin to qualify, and that kind of thing. So they left it out of that letter so that it wouldn't turn into a fiasco.
That would probably make sense, why?
So we have had at least one in front of the council.
Yeah.
So somehow they got.
So, yeah. It kind of gets, I don't know, they try to get the work around, but it's a hardship. The council will consider your problem and talk to you and you can.
Still, we just have a bunch of elderly people in this community that.
Yeah, it is.
After two votes.
Yeah, so I don't know what we do about it, but it's concerned me. I only get his dollars.
Yep.
I'll get his phone.
Any other thing before I move on?
Uh, can I back up a little bit? Did, did we authorize that stream to come out?
Uh, not until we, if you're all gonna have it.
He's gonna swing over.
Take a look, say, I.
Are you ready to move on, that's why I asked, have we?
No, no, it's, it's leaking slowly for now.
Okay. I'll try to make it up there.
So I'm gonna take eight and nine, Kim and Daniel, and Storm Haven Water, we talked about the ball, right?
Yeah.
Item number ten, approval of council meeting and public hearing minutes of November sixth, two thousand seventeen. Have to get a chance to look and see if there are any changes, and if none, chair and attorney motion to drop.
I did have one thing on page seven, still run up on impact. Next is verse of the impact fee.
Okay. And what, we're page seven?
Page seven, top one. Ryan Taylor stated, when a customer pays the impact fee for water service, I think that should read pays the connection fee. Still responsible in some water.
And he has to send to his new president.
Well, it's just.
Right, I remember, I'm sure.
Yeah, I remember what I did last month, and ask me what I did this morning.
Don't look at last month, because it's two months ago.
Oh, maybe the worst. So I think, I, I think it reads correctly, if I'm reading it right. So when they pay the impact fee, that's the right to pull water out of our system. Then they still have to pay connection, then they're still responsible for the installation of a water line from our system to their. So if anything, it would be the installation of a water lateral, for the meter, would that be more clear? Because they, they pay the impact fee and then that gives them, they've now paid for the right to pull water out of our system. But they gotta get that water from wherever our connection point is to their property. And so they still have to pay the connection fee. So we've had some customers who've had their plumber or their, they've done this to their own contractor, one guy was a licensed, and he bonded with the town and he did it himself. Other clients have said, no, we want you to do it, and then we've contracted and had it done. And so we're, we've contracted. Where, so where we've contracted and had it done is the town, we've passed that cost on to the property owners, where they've had their contractor do it, they took care of the fee themselves, we just oversaw it. So the impact, so while we're trying to clarify the impact fee and the connection fee, there's always an impact fee if you wanna take water out of our system. There's a connection fee if the town incurs cost to hook you up to the water system. If you otherwise arrange, make arrangements with a licensed bonded plumber or contractor, then you can pay that directly and it doesn't go through the town. But the impact is the right to pull water out of the pipe, the connection fee is whatever it takes to get water from that point into your system. So I think the, the many, sir, the, the statement of impact fees on that line are correct. It might be more clear to change the water line to water lateral or water lateral and meter.
It's totally up to you, you said it, it says right there in the first line, Ryan Taylor said.
I have to review the tape. So, you see where I'm at on that second line? I'll change water line to water lateral and meter.
Okay.
So that we're clear, we're not telling them they also have to install a twenty-four water line or something.
That will work.
And now that last, uh, last couple of sentences there. And then irrigation water, it has to be provided, Mr. Norris said, and all services are added up, a cost of nineteen thousand dollars may be reached, and this should be considered a bargain for obtaining water service.
Mr. Norris said.
Mr. Norris said.
Well, if it's Mr. Norris said, I'll refer to Mr. Norris on that one.
So that's all these, these, uh, uh, fees, uh, and costs added up, including the cost of a water share.
In Mr. Norris's mouth.
In Mr. Norris's mouth, approximately nineteen thousand.
Oh, in Mr. Norris's, yes.
And that's a.
It's the competition.
A bargain.
Motion to approve, November six minutes.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion to approve, November sixth, we have a second?
Check.
A second in discussion, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion carries, and it's approved. Uh, I think we also have what, do we have those packets, some other minutes in here?
Yes, December.
December fourth, there we go. The chair also intends to motion to, uh.
Okay, item nine, page two. Second paragraph, third sentence down, it's Scott Keel.
So it's Kill? So it's Bill?
Bill.
What page?
It's page two.
T, okay.
Yeah, it's just a typo.
So the fasting type of that.
That's right.
There you go.
I just wanna show her and read the minutes, but.
All right, all right.
Very excited.
Somebody should read them.
Okay, turn back to the motion to accept the, December fourth minutes.
Public, motion approved, December fourth.
Motion to approve, we have a second?